The record show that a corps of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Good evening to everybody. We're gonna get started. Tonight, the Board of Trustees is meeting in a called work session board meeting. The Board welcomes and values input from the community. A single open forum will be provided during tonight's meeting to allow the public the opportunity to address the board. During this time, individuals may share comments or requests or requests related to both agenda and non-agenda items. Those addressing the board are asked to limit their comments to three minutes per meeting. Speakers should identify their name, group affiliation if any, and make a brief presentation with an identified solution if one is sought. Remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole. Oral presentations may not include charges against any employee or board member by name. It is my responsibility to determine if the person addressing the board has attempted to resolve a concern informally or through the district's complaint policies. If not, the speaker will be directed to follow the appropriate policy. The Board requests that all presentations be made in a courteous, respectful, and professional manner, and asks that speakers monitor their own behavior. If you wish to speak during one of the open forums, please fill out one of the cards located on the table in the entry hall. Dr. Harrington?
Uh, no comments today.
Okay, any clarifications?
Uh, not at this time.
Alright, we're ready for open forum.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Crowe?
Come up here, they'll put the time on the screens and you'll, uh, have three minutes.
President of the Board, Mr. Rush, he's, Dr. Harrington, good evening. First time here. I'm here to speak to you about TAD. Uh, well, actually, I'm here to introduce myself to y'all. I've never met y'all. I'm a candidate this year for the TAD Board. I was nominated by the Conservation Districts in the county, which include the Regional Water District, Veridian, and a handful of other municipal utility districts. They had to have their nomination in by August fifteenth. I'm not gonna tell you guys anything that you can't ask your trustee over there. Um, but when I dug through the data on HEB, I noticed you guys lost about five hundred million in residential market value, and your home values, average home value was down about five thousand dollars. Um, throughout the entire county, home values are down with the exception of four districts. Um, and they're down primarily because protests. Protests are up eight percent. Uh, so let me go ahead and get on record with you guys. I understand TAD's desire to provide tax relief to citizens. It's something all schools and cities should strive to achieve through efficiency and sound planning. However, tax relief is not TAD's responsibility. It's done through the tax rate. TAD should not try to dictate anybody's tax policy. What TAD did with the freeze was to insert itself into your budget, but your budget's between you and your taxpayers, not you and TAD. TAD does not set a tax rate. They're there to simply value the property. The truth is, much of Tarrant County's declined in value, and many homeowners have not seen a corresponding reduction in home value because the freeze basically locked home values at the top of the market for three years. I understand when values go down, hard decisions must be made by the entities when it comes to their tax rates, but that's what you signed up to do. Budgeting for HEB is your job. It's not TAD's. TAD's role is to make it easier during your budget process, and yearly appraisals would ensure the most accurate data to achieve that outcome. With my remaining time, I want to talk about the Conservation Districts. As a candidate last year as well, I'm sure you all know. And after the appointment election was over, I sat down and I thought to myself, "Well, what can I do to stay involved and still make some sort of difference?" So I read through Chapter Six of the Tax Code, and lo and behold, there's a provision that allows Conservation Districts to participate in the election process, but only if they request a due by June first of odd number of years. So after figuring out what qualified as a Conservation District for purposes of the statute, I set out to talk to the largest one, which is the Water District. And after talking to them and the chief appraiser, I learned two things. One, Mr. Bartlett could not find a record of the Conservation Districts having ever previously participated. And two, Water District staff and the other muds were simply unaware that they could participate in the process. So that was my goal. I started speaking with them in February, and by May, they'd made the decision to request participation. I believe as elected officials, if you can participate, then you should. So with all that said, I understand this is your appointment, but when you guys come time to vote, I'd appreciate it if you'd at least give me your consideration. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so at this time, the board is going to adjourn into closed session. Pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, the board will adjourn into closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076.
At this time, the board will reconvene into open session. We're ready for reports and presentations. Six point zero one dispersments for the month of August twenty twenty five. Were there any questions on dispersments? All right, six point zero two cooperative purchasing fee report for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, Mr. Kirby. How's your roof coming out?
I'm sorry?
How's your roof going?
It's, well, I think it's done. I don't know. If the debris isn't indication, that's one thing. Otherwise, I think it's finished.
It's not getting torn off when I was going to work this morning.
Yeah, they showed up early. I got out of the garage before they got there so I wouldn't get blocked in. Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to present this. The Texas Education Code requires us to provide a annual report for cooperative purchasing activity. And the report is to list the fees that are related to any cooperative transaction. What we've prepared for you is a list of all of our cooperatives that we were members of. The most recent one was approved in July. And then a listing of all the transaction fees or management fees. There are two hundred and fifty dollars worth of management fees. One is the state comptroller charges a hundred dollars to participate in their co-op. And the Central Texas Purchasing Allowance, Alliance charges us a hundred and fifty. The remaining thirty two hundred dollars that you see listed are transaction fees related to the number of vehicles that we've purchased this year. So we've built up quite a fleet this year and so forth. So our activity reflects that. That, I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions on the fee report? Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Six point zero three technology update, Dr. Hopkins.
So now for the rest of the story, right? So just a reminder, as Casey said, we are part of the strategic plan for effectiveness and efficiency under effective use, efficient use of technology resources. So I wanted to start out tonight by just giving you an update on the twenty twenty three bond. We have completed a number of projects with our bond funds. One thing we've done is we've replaced all student Windows devices during the twenty four, twenty five school year. And as a reminder, our bond did budget for one full replacement cycle of staff and student devices. So as a reminder, every five years, our devices are up for renewal. And so throughout the life of the bond, we will use the next five years to continue that refresh. So we started with our student Windows devices. We also just upgraded our elementary teacher laptops. That was part of their back to school gift. Our secondary teachers received iPads that either replaced or updated. And then we have already replaced over five thousand student Chromebooks. In addition, we were able to work on our data center. Now, this was huge. Our programmers and engineers have put in a lot of work to bring our data center up to current standards. And as you heard from Mr. Davis, there are some great things that we were able to put into place that really help us as a district. In addition, we are also upgrading all of our Cisco voiceover IP systems. So all of the phones and handsets, so the actual hardware, they are in. And we are working through our campuses, giving all the teachers new phones. In addition, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but it was a big deal for us the day that we replaced the generator at the Pat May Center. So out behind the Pat May Center lives our generator, and we were able to replace it. It was twenty five years old, and every Tuesday, it would crank up and run for twenty to thirty minutes, and it was the loudest thing. We could not talk in the parking lot because the generator was so loud. Now you don't even hear it. That generator is there in case of an emergency. It will run portions of the Pat May Center. It will keep our data center up and running so that our campuses can stay up and running. A few years ago, when we had those tornadoes in the area, we were able to bring payroll over to the information services offices and hook them up. And they were able to continue their work in getting payroll out on time because of the generator backup that we had. In addition, we finished installing all of our interactive flat panels at the junior high campuses. So upcoming, what's next is we're going to finish our interactive flat panels for the three remaining elementary campuses. As a reminder, these campuses were new when we started our interactive flat panel journey. So we wanted to put a few more years on the devices that they already had in their classrooms. And so now it's time for them to get their new interactive flat panel devices. In addition, we'll continue the admin device replacements and student Chromebook replacements. We're also working on elementary cafeterias, projectors, and sound systems for those. There are many of our cafeterias that are in need of upgrades, so we're working on that right now. In addition to adding outdoor wireless access points at the front of all of our campuses. Not only will this help our campuses if they decide to take their learning outside and they want to take their technology with them, but it will also help prepare us. Right now, Arbor Creek is an example. They have a iPad check-in system that they use for car rider drop off and pickup. And so having access points on the outside of their building helps enable that technology to work and create a more seamless opportunity for that campus. So in the realm of instructional technology, not only are we hardware, but we also work with teachers on making sure that they understand how to effectively integrate technology into their camp, into their classroom. We have three different programs that teachers can be a part of. One of them is TechSperts, and that is where a teacher works with an instructional technology coach to make technology goals for their classroom. And then the coach comes and observes the teacher and offers them feedback on how they're integrating that goal into their classroom. For teachers who are ready to take the next step, we have a program called Innovate. Innovate is an application-based program. Four years ago, you guys approved this program, and we are on our fourth cohort, and that is for teachers who want the power of watching peers. They have days where they go watch one another teach. We give feedback. They also come after school four times a year where they engage in learning and discussion about ways that they can more effectively integrate technology into their teaching practice. Finally, as you know, we have rolled out ChatGPT EDU. Two stories for you. One is within ChatGPT, there is a voice translation feature. It is part of our paid credits that we have. So if you remember, we have licenses for everybody, and then we have some credits that we've paid for. So we just recently got to the point where we could start piloting some of these more advanced features. So Marie Becker and members of her team started piloting the voice translation for us. And two weeks ago, they had their first adult ESL classes of the year. And members of the classes walked in, and Marie had her phone with ChatGPT up on it, and she would use it to speak, you know, to speak to a member of the class, and it would translate into their native language. And so she said, you know, I did a number of different languages. And she said, I had one woman walk in, and she spoke Japanese. And so she toggled to Japanese, and they began having a conversation. And she said, the look on the woman's face when she was understood and could communicate with somebody on our campus. As you know, Japanese isn't something that we have translation readily available for. But this woman said, for the first time, she was able to show up and get her questions answered and feel like she was understood and get where she needed to go. So I firmly believe as we continue to roll that out across the district, we're going to have more and more stories like that from our families who we are better able to communicate with. I look forward to the day that we're able to get it across all of our campuses so that we can really communicate with and engage families in discussions about their student and their learning. Another thing that we're doing with ChatGPT EDU is we have another application-based program for teachers. This is at the secondary level only right now, and it's called AIM, which stands for AI in motion. This is a collaboration between the EdTech group and curriculum, where members of the curriculum team and members of the EdTech team work together to bring AI into motion in our classrooms. So teachers are being creative with their use of AI tools in the classroom and how they instruct using AI. And so we have seventeen teachers who are starting this journey. I checked in with Stacy Birch, our coordinator of instructional technology today before I left, and she said they're about to have their first in-person meeting and learning opportunity. But they have a Google chat, and she said all day, teachers are dropping ideas that they have, what they tried in their classroom, how they're working with some of our tools. And so it's very exciting to see these seventeen teachers paving the way for what we're doing in our district. And finally, as you know, we've talked about safety and security. We've talked about our zero trust and our digital tools approval that we have started. And then finally, Mr. Kirby, Kirby and I will be speaking with you a lot more, but we are out for a request for proposal for our student information system and our enterprise resource planning. So just as a frame of reference, we currently use eSchool by Power School for our student information system and Power School for our enterprise resource planning. And we are evaluating both of those systems to see what might be the best for HEB ISD. Do you have any questions?
Sir, are there other people that are assisting you looking at those systems?
For the request for proposal, there is. There's a huge team. Ms. Tuttle is part of the team. Mr. Williams is part of the team. So we've really taken every area of our district that utilizes these two programs, and we've picked key leaders and users. So we've had counselors involved, teachers involved, campus administrators involved. Yes, I do not know enough about all of these programs to feel like I can make the decision in silo. Anything else? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. Ready to review regular board meeting agenda items. Seven point zero one financial statements for the month of July twenty twenty five. Mr. Williams?
Good evening, Board. This month, we are going to be looking at the financial statements for month ended July thirty first, twenty twenty five. We are nearing the end of our fiscal year. We got one more month after this, and we'll be done, send this one to the auditors and let them do their stuff on it, and we'll work on the next year. So let's get started. So with the general fund, we have a fund balance of one ninety three, one thirty, two sixty one. That represents revenues over expenditures in the amount of fourteen million, eight twenty six, nine seventy seven. Investment revenue for this reporting period was seven point seven million dollars. Total expenditures as of July thirty first were at eighty two point nine two percent, below our threshold number of ninety two percent. And so this fund is doing very well, and we hope to end up with a better than, better end to our year than what we started out with. General fund matrix, we had payroll coming in at one sixty nine, seven oh five, oh thirty eight, which is eighty six point seven percent of our budget, right up there where we usually end up. Utilities were at four million, six fourteen, one sixty one, or two point four percent. Instructional supplies were at two million, seven forty seven, two seventy nine, or one point four percent. And then other expenditures, which, as I say every month, is mostly insurance, property insurance, one point six percent. Those make up the vast majority of our budget right there. Child nutrition services, we had a fund balance of eight million, five twenty five, two eighty. That's revenues over expenditures in the amount of one million, six oh six, six fifty four. The department just continues to rock along. Mariella doing a great job. Expenditures as of seven thirty one were at seventy five point seven seven percent. So as I said, the budget is performing. So as I said, the budget is performing as expected. Debt service fund, we made our, we have a fund balance of sixty-eight, one seventy-three, six seventy-nine. That's revenues over expenditures in the amount of forty-three, nine twenty-four, nine seventy-three. We have made our final debt service payment, was made before the August fifteenth due date. Total debt service paid for the year is sixty-two million, oh thirty-three, eight hundred. We brought in maybe just a little bit more. We will, by the end of August, we'll bring in a little bit more revenue than we look expended out of that fund, which is kind of where you want to land every, every year. Investment interest for the year as of this reporting period was two point oh three million dollars. Tuition-based pre-K fund, fund balance of three sixty-eight, two forty. That's revenues over expenditures in the amount of twenty-eight thousand and ninety dollars. Revenue received from the current period is ninety-six point seven two percent. The expenditures were at ninety-two point three six percent. But like I say, this fund's at the end of its life for the last fiscal year. So that program is performing as expected. Special revenue funds, which you know make up many, many different state and federal funds. They were at a total expenditures of seven thirty-one, were at fifty-five point four oh. And as I say every month, the expenditures exceed the revenues due to the lag in the T E A reimbursement, the way they do that. So, but these programs are all tracking the way they should also. Campus activity fund, fund balance of three million, five forty-one, seven sixty-one. That's revenue over expenditures in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three thirty-three. Revenues were at two million, seven twenty-four, nine fifty-nine, while expenditures were at two million, five forty-five, six twenty-six. So those funds are performing as expected as well. Oops, went too far. Twenty twenty-four bond fund, we have a fund balance of five thirty-two, seven forty-three, ninety-seven. That's expenditures over revenue of forty million, one sixty-one, nine forty-seven. So you can, you'll notice there that those expenditure numbers starting to, starting to creep up now that we're really getting into the construction phase of our projects. Investment interest for the year as of this reporting period was at seventeen point seven million dollars. And as we've talked about before, we will issue that remaining three hundred and ninety-seven point three million. It's anticipated possibly next, mid-year next year sometime. Just kind of depends on how our cash flows looking and projections, so. Locally defined fund, fund balance of twenty-four million, six ninety-three, five oh six. That's expenditures over revenue in the amount of three million, five thirty-five, seven eighty-five. Investment interest for this fund was at nine hundred and fifty-one thousand as of this reporting period. And as you can see from the bullet points up there, we've several, several different projects we're finishing out, close to finishing out, and some of them were just still working on. What was that?
Time's up.
That's it. Any questions?
Any questions on the financial statements? All right, thank you, Dewey. Seven point zero two self-certification for increased micro purchase threshold for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Kerbo?
This is another one of those annual requirements to, to be utilized with federal funds. Office of Management and Budget allowed a provision to self-certify and increase the micro purchase threshold. Originally was ten thousand. After that, between ten thousand and forty-nine, nine ninety-nine. Had to go through and complete process and get three quarters in all this. So what allows us to do this is that we're a low-risk audit district, meaning we've got sound controls and internal controls and procedures, and we've not had an exception on our audit. So that allows us to do this. The reason it's forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents is because this provision says under fifty thousand. Every practice has, or that we've seen shows forty-nine thousand, nine ninety-nine. It leaves out that ninety-nine cents. At my prior district, we actually had an expenditure forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents, and we had no legal authority to be able to make that purchase. So we increased it to forty-nine, nine ninety-nine and ninety-nine cents. So that's what we're bringing to you tonight for this.
All right, any questions? Okay, seven point zero four, no, seven point zero three, extension of RFP twenty-one dash zero five and twenty-one dash zero five B, maintenance supplies, equipment, and services.
These, these two bids, twenty-one oh five and twenty-one oh five B are as-needed supply bids for maintenance and facilities. So think about plumbing and electrical supplies, irrigation supplies, et cetera, anything we need to do to make repairs. And this is the final extension for these. We'll be issuing a new bid next year, so next year we'll be introducing a new bid for it.
All right, any questions on this extension? Thank you, Mr. Kerbo. Seven point zero four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, district improvement plan. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening. So before you, we have the district improvement plan, which is the strategic plan. And the most important piece about this is it ensures that our arrows align and are all pointed in the same direction because we never lose track of our focus, and we bring that data to you in a transparent way, and we continue to set goals and adjust those goals from there. So any questions?
Any questions on the district improvement plan slash strategic plan? All right, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Seven point zero five, Cisco Flex Calling Subscription Renewal. Are there any questions on that? All right, seven point zero six, replacement of administrative devices. Any questions? All right, we are down to action items. Eight point zero one, consider approval of donations for the September regular board meeting presentation of certificates of appreciation. If there aren't any questions, I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the September twenty twenty-five donations as presented.
Second. I have a motion and second for the board to approve the September twenty twenty-five donations as presented. Please vote. And that motion passes. Eight point zero two, consider approval of agreement for the purchase of attendance credit and delegate contractual authority to the superintendent. Mr. Williams?
Okay, so as a designated chapter forty-nine district or a recaptured district, even though we don't pay into recapture, we have to go through this project, process each year after T E A notifies us in the July of each year. Just basically designating how we will do the, do recapture, how we will repay it, this and that. There's three, three steps to that process. This is the second step. We used to do this, for those of you who've been on the board for a while, we used to do this with a paper contract. The board signed it, and we had to FedEx it to Austin and do all this stuff. Now they do it electronically through TEAL. But what they require now is that you designate authority to the superintendent only to do that. So the board needs to designate authority to Dr. Harrington. And I apologize for the long wording of this motion, but it's, it's the way T E A says it has to be. Actually, the other day, out of curiosity, got online and watched some other districts to see what they do. They're doing it just like we are. With that, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
All right, are there any questions? All right, I'll accept a motion.
For the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, we delegated contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code one one point one five one one to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under T E C four eight dot two five seven and T E C Chapter forty, forty-nine, subchapter A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education as authorized under T E C forty-nine point zero zero six. This included approval of the agreement for the purchase of the attendance credit for the agreement, for the purchase of the attendance credit, netting chapter forty-eight funding.
I have a motion and second for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, we delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code eleven point one five one one C four to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under T E C forty-eight dot two five seven and T E C Chapter forty-seven, subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education as authorized under T E C forty-nine dot zero zero six. This included approval of the agreement for the purchase of the attendance credit or the agreement for the purchase of the attendance credit, netting chapter forty-eight funding. Please vote. And that motion passes. Eight point zero three, consider approval of Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade band trip payment. Mr. Kerbo and Ms. Cumberland?
Well, obviously, we're excited about the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade and LD Bell Band's participation in that. I get to present the item to you because it's over a hundred thousand dollars and requires board approval, but more importantly, I get to stand here with Ms. Cumberland and let her speak a little about that if you have any questions related to that. You've got the information there. This is the final payment for this trip, and there's been a lot of effort fundraising and, and payment out of pocket, so we're excited that this opportunity is afforded them. I know she's excited.
Well, I'm, I'm very excited, and I'm just here to answer any questions. I'll let you know a little bit about the trip. We're really, anytime we take our students anywhere, we want it to be an experience for them. So some of the things include the nine eleven museum, a trip to Battery Park, a Broadway show. They're going to see the Rockettes. They're going to go to Top of the Rock and really get to experience New York before they get up at three AM the day of Thanksgiving and prepare for the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. They will take a boat ride around, I guess, around the Statue of Liberty and eat Thanksgiving together.
I think, I think I'm going on that one.
Do you have any questions?
Does this conclude their fundraising, or will they continue to fundraise?
I think they'll probably continue to fundraise. Part of what they're looking at is scarves and hats and gloves for the kids and a heavy winter coat. In case the weather's really bad, they'll march in that over their uniforms. So they're really kind of coming up with all the contingencies that could happen because you never know what the weather will be.
All right, any other questions? Then I will accept a motion.
I move that the board approve the payment of LD Bell High School Band's participation in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade as presented.
Second. I have a motion and second, the board approve the payment for LD Bell High School Band's participation in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade as presented. Please vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other business, opportunity for board members to request items to be placed on future board agendas. Anyone have anything this evening? All right, then, review of the board activity chart. Let's see, we don't have anyone down to go to lead HEB year one, if anyone was interested in.
That's the same time we're all in.
Oh, we're gone, okay.
So please let everyone know that, sorry.
By the way, on that note, we have guests for that game. Will there be anybody there?
Yeah, I think Dr. Johnson will be there. Andy will be there.
You have to, you have to be nice to all the guests, Andy. Can you do that?
You got it, man.
All right, so we're, I think we're looking to get on everything else. All right, we don't need a second closed session, correct? And I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.
Hi, they were adjourned. I just got this text. I think we all should do this. It's from Mike Fielder. A Hallton Middle School seventh grader, I'm here to rest while jogging off the field a few minutes ago. Said Roger Bali, training trainer, at the A E D and ministry.